I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Byram, may I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Harrington.
Here.
Mrs. Quintern.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
May we stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Horneck, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to bring Lieutenant Colonel Fritz forward. We have a special recognition this evening for a gentleman who has really done quite a bit for our ROTC program. And so Colonel, I'll turn it over to you to expound on that.
May I use the podium here for my remarks?
Yes, sir.
Should I have the individual come join me?
That'd be great.
Gunny, come post. You can just, right here, you can come stand with me. If someone were to ask me what three words would I use to describe Gunny, I wouldn't even have to think about it. The first word comes to mind when I think of Gunny is Marine. Every time anyone calls him Gunny, we remind ourselves of where he comes from. For example, did you all know that Gunny also worked for a tobacco company and for tractor supply? But we don't call him sales rep or manager, so why do we call him Gunny? It's a cool name, to be sure. Marines are always so cool. And Mr. Spellman, while accurate, seems a bit stiff. To borrow some biblical language, Isaiah 43:1 says in part, "But now this is what the Lord says: I have summoned or called you by name; you are mine." The OC community calls him Gunny because we claim him by this name. And by calling him Gunny, the cadets, the parents, and staff who work with him have said, "You are our Gunny. You belong to us." The second word I'd use to describe Gunny is servant. He has applied his military and business management expertise toward completely reinvigorating our supply room and inventory management. Want to know how many pairs of green socks, size small, we have on the shelf? Gunny can tell you. He knows right now, that's why he's laughing. He can tell you not only because he has organized everything, but he occasionally donates generously out of his own pocket, which is why we have some much-needed pairs of size small green socks. Gunny makes several trips a month up to Quantico to have cadet uniforms dry cleaned, altered, or repaired. He takes the uniforms home to launder them in his own washer and dryer. He uses his own tools and resources to improve our building and grounds so that we have a nice place to learn and drill. And speaking of drill, there's one disadvantage to having a chaplain as the senior army instructor for JROTC. I know mostly lots of chaplain stuff. While cadets need to know just about everything else, I don't. But Gunny was a Marine drill instructor, and at my request, he has worked with the cadets to improve their drill performance by teaching them commands and showing them how to march in step and to execute proper facing movements. And again, at my request, because chaplains don't receive weapons training, Gunny has stepped in to fill the gap, and along with our friends at the Orange County Sheriff's Office, has taught the cadets basic rifle marksmanship and gun safety. Orange County public schools would not have the quality JROTC program we're building without Gunny's servant spirit and heart for the cadets. And finally, the third word I'd use to describe Gunny is leader. My cadets know that the definition of leadership is simple. Leadership is influence. They also learned that the best leaders lead not by position, but by that influence. A person who thinks he's a leader but influences no one to follow is simply out taking a walk in the park. Gunny expertly manages the supply room for the cadets. He teaches them how to drill, and I've also heard how he speaks to cadets, respectfully encouraging them to do the right things the right way in order to prepare now for a successful future. Gunny doesn't lead by position. He doesn't have one. He's a volunteer. But Gunny knows his cadets. Because of what he teaches and how he serves, they follow him because he is a consistent, positive influence in their lives. David Spellman, Marine, servant, and leader. A servant leader. That's our Gunny, and that's why he's being recognized tonight. My vision for the Orange County High School, JROTC, is for the cadets to become the tip of the spear for the cultural changes that turnaround that Mr. Price wants to see at the school. I can think of no better battle buddy with whom I want to implement those changes for JROTC and Orange County High School than Gunny Spellman. Gunny, you make us better every day you come to school. Well done, well deserved, Semper Five. I don't think he even knows what he's getting yet.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. At this time, we have some overnight field trip requests. One from FFA and one from Ms. Jamerson and our TSA folks, I believe. Renee, do we have somebody from FFA here? Okay. You want to speak to it? And then Ms. Jay, we'll have you come up next.
While she's walking up, I wanted to thank both of the gentlemen for your service in the Armed Forces, and a volunteer. Wow. Thank you for your dedication to the young people in the program in your free time. Thank you very much.
I, again, he's there every day, and we would, I don't know where we would be without him this year. He is amazing, so.
And a savior. Thanks, Gunny. Yes, sir.
So, the field trip that is before you is for the FFA State Convention, and Heather Dotson, the CTE teacher, couldn't be here this evening, but this is an overnight field trip, and we are asking for your support of that. The students will learn a lot about leadership and some other workshops that they'll take so that they can bring it back next year to make our FFA even stronger. So they're taking 10 students and two chaperones. And the cost is estimated there for you, and they have fundraising through FFA funding to cover the cost. So, do you have any questions? It is at Virginia Tech.
I move to approve this field trip request for the FFA.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Ms. Jay?
So the last time we were here, we had just qualified to go to Nationals. And this past weekend, we went to West Virginia and competed in a different drone competition. We didn't bring any trophies home, but we were up against the New Jersey state champion, the New England state champion. Anyway, it was a great experience. We really appreciate you guys giving us the approval for that. So the next thing, John L. will probably be the TSA president next year. She will be the pilot, if you approve, for our team, and she, we're going to represent Virginia TSA. So we qualified at the state competition. The top three teams get to go. We, I, it's tough because I guess Virginia is so much later, but anyway, I have secured rooms, registration, and we've looked into the auto train and just taking the train. As far as fundraising goes, as soon as you say yes, that you motion that we can do this, we are going to start producing items in our lab at school to help fundraising.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve this field trip request for the TSA drone team.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You guys are lucking out going to the Rose and Shingle Creek as well. That's a beautiful location.
Yeah, and I got in.
Excellent. Good. Very good. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Honnaker. Come forward. I think we have two back-to-back for you, correct? We have our supplemental appropriations and we have our out-of-county recommendation for the tuition rate.
Yes, I'm here to request a supplemental appropriation for BPS funds for technology in our operating budget. And we have three grants that we have received in our school nutrition fund. I did attach documents with that. Is there any questions? Okay, great.
Any questions, anyone?
No. I move to approve this supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $104,262.29 increase in revenue and expenses to the operating budget, and $133,477.08 increase in revenue and expenses to the school nutrition budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
And next is our out-of-county tuition rate. This is based on local funding, and it's divided by the number of enrollment projections. We're seeing a small increase this year of $92. So I request that we approve the out-of-county tuition of $4967. Any questions on that one?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the $24,25 out-of-county tuition rate in the amount of $4,967.
Do I have a second?
I would second that motion.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, we'll have Ms. Blair come forward to provide some information about contract renewal in, I guess, three different areas, correct, Lynda?
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Horneck.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, members of the board. We do have renewal of our contracts for bakery dairy and produce. These went out to bid last year, and they can be renewed once, they can be renewed every year for three years. And that's if we're good, if we like their product and we like their service, which we do. And that is Schmidt Baking Company for the bread, and Pet Dairy for the milk, and Standard Produce for our produce company. And so I'm requesting approval of that.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the renewal of the contracts with the Schmidt Baking Company in the amount of $50,000 to provide the bread, Pet Dairy in the amount of $100,000 to provide milk, and Standard Produce in the amount of $180,000 to provide produce for Orange County Public Schools throughout 2425.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll turn it over to Ms. Byram to go over the calendar, starting in July, correct, Laura?
Yes. So, I made the calendar based on your approval of the first and last Monday. So we're following the same pattern as we did last year. When we met with Mrs. Anderson earlier, late last week, we talked about having only one meeting in July, since there's a lot of vacations for staff, and it would fall right after the first week of July, where there ends in a holiday. It looks like it follows the pattern. It's always the first and last Monday unless there's a holiday or a conference. I believe if you look at September, there's both a holiday and a conference for the superintendent. And then in October, there's a conference for the superintendent that messes with the work session. And, and we did also discuss with Ms. Anderson one meeting in December. And I believe that was all. For the most part, it just follows the same pattern as we're currently doing. And this would begin July 1st, so you have some time to look at the dates if you.
So are there any questions? Do we want to take some time to look at this, or would we like to vote on that this evening?
I'd like to have a chance to look at it.
Okay, perfect. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. We will bring that back on the 3rd. We will head now to superintendent's reports, and Ms. Blair will bring you back forward for the summer meals program report. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The school nutrition department is happy to serve the community again this year with our seamless summer option. We offer free breakfast and lunch during the months of June and July for children ages 1 to 18. In June, we're providing breakfast and lunch for students attending all of our summer school sites. In addition, each site is open for families to come for breakfast and lunch, and weekend meal kits will be given out on Thursdays for the kids to take home or for parents to come pick up at the curbside. Along with our community student meal distribution, our program is providing summer meals to Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, Early Head Start, Academics Student Institute, the extended school year, and summer school enrichment classes. And we have onsite breakfast and lunch meals for children in those programs, and weekend meal kits every Thursday to go home. We were fortunate that this year, No Kid Hungry approved a $13,752 grant for expanding access to non-congregate summer meals for families across the county. And this grant helps to offset the summer labor costs and supplies associated with those meal kits that we'll be giving out. After summer school's over, and after June 13th, we'll continue our summer meal program through the 25th of July to provide meals for kids attending some of our programs in the schools, like Head Start and Child Care and Boys and Girls Club. And then those three schools, Teak, Gordon Barber, and Locust Grove Elementary, will continue to be open for the community to come have meals for their kids and to pick up those weekend bags on Thursdays at the curbside. We have, we're working on our outreach to include yard signs for the schools, social media, information on our website, and we're going to put our big banner up at the stoplight like we always do. So we're hoping to increase our participation by 10% this year based on having these weekend meal bags. That's kind of the new thing this year. It's a throwback to the COVID time. I kind of, it fizzled out, and there wasn't very much interest, so I applied for the grant, hoping that we could try it again and see if the community has a need. Any questions?
I would just say thank you for participating in this program. I know that it does fill a need, and it's nice that you have continued to go forward with that and pursue either further opportunities to provide good nutritious meals. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would echo what Ms. Harrington said as well. Thanks for doing this. There is a hunger issue in this county. And it's not spoken about, and there are young people that go to bed at night, and they don't have dinner. So, thank you for all you do.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lynda. Next, we have our OCHS student report. And so we have our, I guess, outgoing president, correct, in Jackson Hamilton, and our incoming president, Sarah Wiles, are here this evening. And really looking forward to hearing from you all this evening, and then on a more continuous basis as we move into next year. So Jackson, I will turn it over to you, and thank you very much for bringing this information forward.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for bringing me back here to present this report. So the main thing I did for this report was I sent, I decided to create a feedback survey to send out to students. I actually modeled the questions off of a survey Dr. Horneck sent out to, I believe, families when he started his tenure as superintendent. I included questions about what OCHS should start, stop, and continue doing, and as well as questions about students' greatest challenges in high school and their favorite experiences. And so these five questions were all fully free-form responses, so students could write whatever, and I got a total of 140 responses, which is good, given that was sent out on May 16th, and it's the end of the school year. So I'm happy to get that many responses. And unsurprisingly, the grade level distribution and underrepresentation of seniors. So for the first question, the favorite school-related experience, these responses really highlight how there were so many different activities and experiences that our students enjoy. No single activity has more than 25% of the students putting it as their favorite experience. Sports is up there to some extent, which is not surprising. Then you also have a lot of students who say find art as their favorite experience and other extra curricular activities in clubs. This includes things like FFA, DACA, and TSA. And then you have a significant number of students enjoying the various different school activities, such as pep rallies and field days and other events, many of which are put on by the student council. And so I was happy to see that many students enjoy those. And then you have a small number of students saying that classes or field trips were their favorite experiences, which kind of doesn't surprise me, that for most students, it's the extra activities that overexcite them. And then I thought this was interesting. We had a small but substantial number of students who said that JROTC was their favorite experience, and so that is very notable. Do you have anything else to add about that, Sarah?
I don't think so.
Okay. So for the next slide, the biggest challenge, this one, there were a whole lot of different responses that students made for this, and so I've done my best to categorize them. And so one of the things that really stood out to me with this was if you look in the top right, I was surprised that there was a significant number of students who put bullying as their biggest challenge. And I really had not realized that bullying was still an issue at the high school. And this was nine students, so not a huge number, but a significant percentage of the respondents. And I was especially concerned because of the respondents, almost, who said bullying was a challenge, almost all of them said they were not adequately supported in dealing with that challenge. And so that's something that I thought was very concerning. And then, aside from that, I found it positive that for most of the academic challenges, most students felt like they were supported when dealing with academic challenges. But you still have a significant number of students who feel like they weren't supported with those. And then you also have a small number of students dealing with various health challenges, and though, like mental or physical health challenges. And with those, about half of those students said they were adequately supported, and about half said they weren't provided with adequate support. And so that's something that I feel like could maybe be walked on as well, providing more support to students dealing with health challenges.
I agree.
Jackson, quick question.
Yes.
On this slide. Did they have choices, or did they fill in their answers?
So they filled in their answers. They like, for all of these questions, they actually typed out their answers. So I spent over the past couple of days, several hours, like categorizing these answers. I felt like I didn't want to do choices because that would be kind of boxing them in. I just wanted to, I want to have like their raw answers, and then to be able to categorize them. I will say to all of you, school board members, if you'd like to look at the raw answers, let me know, and I can share the spreadsheet with you if you'd like to read them. It was informing and eye-opening for me to read the raw responses. So I would recommend that if you have the time. Thank you. So, next, this is what should the high school start doing? We had, again, a wide variety of different responses, but one of the things that stuck out to me the most was that of the students suggesting a specific thing, the most students suggested expanding club time and opportunities for clubs to meet. This is something that, as I spoke to last time in public comments, has been an issue for the past couple of years. And I find it notable that many students still feel like it's an issue, not just it being canceled, but also that when it does happen, clubs don't have enough time to really meet. And then also, something that really stood out was communication. This is something that I feel like teachers talk about a lot, like communication sometimes being an issue. But to see students saying that communication is an issue was... But to see students saying that communication is an issue was interesting. And so, what they meant was mainly students were saying that there wasn't adequate communication about events or activities going on at school, but also about schedule changes. Often, there wasn't adequate communication. And the other, the other issues here were, a lot of students wanted to see that or food at lunch, which I feel like is to be expected. I don't really know if there was much that can be done about that, but, but there were also, once again, here you had students, again, talking about bullying. And then, a few students talked about wanting more specific classes, like in specific subject areas. And a few students wanting to bring back second chance breakfast, which was gotten rid of, I believe mainly due to issues with students in the hallways during that time. And then, aside from those, there was a desire for more fun activities like spirit days and for enforcing policies and rules more consistently. Now, this was interesting because it's not just students saying like, don't have these rules. It's a lot of students were saying, if we have them, we should be enforcing them consistently. And then, the last things that I'll really bring attention to here are student mental health. Several students brought that up. They want to see more support for that. And then, it wasn't a huge number of students, but I was concerned that there were students bringing up like physical building issues and maintenance, like students saying that the bathrooms need to be cleaned or, or that the roof leaks need to be fixed. And then, the last thing that I'll bring attention to here is several students were saying that we have a need to, to hire better and more qualified teachers. Several students saying that. And these were, the concerns here were mainly, especially for math and Spanish, that for those subjects, students were having teachers who were absent a lot or leaving mid-year and then they weren't able to get a quality education in those subjects. That was the concern there.
I wanted to talk a little bit about that too, because I think that a lot of the teachers are very well-qualified educationally. But when it comes to actually teaching the class learning fundamental skills on how to teach the kids, they struggle. Some of the best learning that I've ever had has been hands-on experiences and that's completely like absent in our school. And so, the teachers definitely understand what they're teaching, but articulating that to the students has been a challenge.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. And so, can you move on? Yes. So, for the next one, what should the high school start doing? For this one, a lot of students were talking about various different school rules, as one would probably expect. The biggest thing that students brought up was the E-Hol pass system, which was introduced this year. Personally, I haven't had much of an issue with it, but students have, in the survey, were concerned mainly because many thought was just a time hassle, like it was just a hassle and it took time to pour up and that it just was inconvenient and it wasn't always working. Like several students said that it was saying that the bathrooms were full when they want and so, it just wasn't very effective. And so, those were the complaints about E-Hol pass, mainly that wasn't effective or it was inefficient. And then, for the dress code, there were several different complaints about the dress code. Some of them were more specific than others, but many students complaining about the hat policy, especially, that was the biggest concern with the dress code, the hat policy. And then...
I can talk about that.
Yeah, you can talk about that.
So, the hat policy is not really a huge deal, but the, they're enforcing it in a way of like, the teacher says, don't wear your hat. And then, the kids are like, okay. And then, they round the corner and they put it back on. And so, it's just like an endless cycle that's, it's not really doing anything. It's just kind of there and then the students ignore it. So, I don't know if that's something that you would want to get rid of, but it's definitely not changing anything because students still bring their hat to school and still wear it.
This is, once again, going back to something from what we should start doing, which was that several students were saying that we should be enforcing the policies that we do have more consistently. And so, like this is an example of the hat policy. A lot of people say it shouldn't be in place partly because it's enforced so inconsistently. And then, the last major thing here is a lot of students dissatisfied with the in-good-standing policy, which especially as it relates to attendance. And so, a lot of the students were upset about the, not upset, but frustrated with the Saturday school provision where in order to make up attendance, they could go to school on Saturdays. And so, a lot of students were dissatisfied with that provision. And so, that was the biggest complaint there. And a lot of students were dissatisfied with it because they said that, that they thought it wasn't effective, like they thought that the policy wasn't effective because students just weren't caring about. It wasn't just students saying they personally didn't want to do it, but a lot of students were saying that they felt like it wasn't effective because it was, in part because it was being enforced inconsistently. Going along with that, one of the things that I was surprised to see are was favoritism of certain students. Like this was a theme that popped up several times, especially in relation to the in-good-standing policy. Students were saying that athletes were given preferential, they saw that athletes were being given preferential treatment with the in-good-standing policy. That was one complaint. And so, that's where the favoritism complaint comes from. Are there any other specific items for this slide that you have questions about?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Absolutely. Sorry, I was reading.
That's okay. First of all, thank you very much for bringing a really comprehensive presentation and some good information forward. I would ask you, the in-good-standing program, can you tell me a little bit more about this? So, that is allowing students to make up things that they have missed, academic lessons that they may have missed due to attendance issues? Is that correct?
So, it's a multifaceted policy. The main provision that students are concerned about is, in theory, if you, if you miss a certain number of days for attendance, you'll be barred from all extracurricular activities whatsoever. Like that's the theoretical punishment end. And so, to avoid that, students have had the option of either staying after school or going to Saturday school. And so, in order to make up those attendance days, and they are also supposed to bring assignments or work with them so that, in theory, they can make up that lourning as well. That's how it's supposed to work.
Dr. Hornick, if the board would be interested, I would love to have some feedback as to those students that are being provided opportunities to make up work, if that is helping them in an academic standing and giving them the support that they need to make sure that they get good grades and actually learn and have that opportunity when they do miss school? Is that something that can be quantified?
You have thoughts, Renee?
I think it's something that we could want to talk to surprise you.
Yeah, I'd have to start with Mr. Price.
Okay.
See, as far as who the students are.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's an accountability measure, essentially what Jackson is saying. I mean, it's, I mean, extracurriculars and driving and parking passes are, those are, they're extra, right? And so, we should be meeting a baseline target of behavior, attendance, discipline, in order to be able to take part in the extras. And so, it is, where you have in-good-standing essentially is a second chance. If you, if you didn't meet the standard first time, you have opportunities to re-acquire extracurriculars, right? So, it's an accountability measure and it also provides students an opportunity to, to get back into the good graces, so to speak. So, I'm actually happy that there are some, this tells me that it's working, right? If you have folks that want it to stop, it's, we're...
That's what I was thinking too.
We're going, we're going in the right direction, right? I mean, accountability and discipline, you know, it doesn't stand in contrast to, you know, having fun and being successful, right? They go hand in hand. So, I'm not surprised, but I'm certainly, you know, and whether there are things that the high school wants. It was an initiative that they started, I think probably around the beginning of the second semester. It was, or even into the second semester. And it was in response to some wide-ranging issues of behavior and attendance. And so, I'm sure there are things that through the summer, their school improvement planning will, their team will address and refine and continue to adapt. But that's the premise ultimately behind it. And so, I think the information that you have, Jackson, that you've gleaned, plus our staff survey, engagement survey, I think will be really important data points for the, the school improvement team to set goals and establish some, some strategies they want to implement moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I do have a couple more slides, but before I move on to those, I will point out there again that there were some concerns that the, from students, that the in-good-standing policy wasn't, wasn't being implemented like evenly like that, especially that student athletes weren't actually being punished and that like, maybe they were being, there was a feeling that student athletes were being given too much leeway. And so, that was one perception that I noticed that seemed somewhat concerning. And so, with that, could you move on? Oh...
I did have a question about slide five. I'm sorry, I thought we were waiting till the end, but if we're going through, if we don't mind going back to discussing the more club time.
Yes.
Dr. Hornick, is, would it be an accurate statement to say that club time doesn't count towards instructional time?
Yes.
So, I think maybe that's something that we should highlight for the students especially. Maybe it's just for your ratification, you can share amongst your peers. But there are a certain number of hours that students have to be in class and learning. And so, that is obviously going to be taking priority. So, if, if more club time is warranted, then it would almost seem that longer school days would also be on the table. So, that's just something to keep in mind and, and, you know, continue sharing this information. But I think that would be to your guys' benefit to, to know that as well. But I do, I appreciate all this information and I absolutely would enjoy going through the individual comments that you guys have acquired.
Okay, thank you. Could you move on to the slide seven to continue?
And Jackson or Sarah, if you guys share the information with Ms. Byram, she can make sure that she funnels it to the entire board. As far as like the, the individual responses.
Okay.
Why do you think? We can just skip over.
Okay. So, this was for what should OCHS continue doing? And one of the things that I noticed was that for all of the questions, there were some students who we didn't give a real response, like they said nothing or don't know or something to that extent. But that really sold out the most for this question, like a whole lot of students really didn't put anything or couldn't think of anything they thought we should continue doing. And so, that's, that's a little concerning to me, but out of the students that did put something, most of them, or a large portion of them mentioned spirit activities like pep rallies or, or assemblies and spirit days. And so, that's a positive thing to me that those are making an impact. And then, I was struck by the fact that a significant number of students mentioned the free meals, like mentioned free breakfast or free lunch as something that positively affects them and that they want us to keep doing. And, and then advisory also, a significant number of students said they wanted us to keep doing advisory. And Ms. Quinton, I have a question, or Mr. Hornick, does advisory, like when it's not club time, does advisory count toward instructional time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the thing where it says nothing or don't know, I know a few friends that they just don't have a whole lot of faith and if they do put something that, that is helping and they want to continue, that it will continue, or that if they implement something new, that it'll actually happen. So, if they say something like, I would really like this idea to be put forth, actually that, having that idea be followed through is, is kind of hard because of the amount of instructional time that we need to meet. And so, I think that might be why there's so many kids that say nothing or I don't know.
Thank you, Sarah. And so, I believe that, I would also like to mention on that slides, a lot of students saying that we should support a lot of the activities and experiences that they enjoy and keep supporting them, like students saying we should keep supporting clubs and keep supporting sports and keep supporting our fine arts programs. And so, that's not surprising. And also, I noticed several students mentioned that we need to keep supporting the school library, which is, it has several different things that students take advantage of, like students can go there during lunch or after school to meet with teachers for tutoring. And so, there are for several different benefits for students. And then, that is it for that slide. So, I can move on to the last slide. Oh, you can go on over to conclusions. So, overall, the responses were really scattered generally, which to me just highlights how diverse the perspectives within the student body are. And any responses, I feel like that had enough different students concerned about to make it into this report so that at least be considered, not just the top one or top two concerns. And going back to the most striking recurring topics, again, I thought was striking that the student support for club time was so prevalent. And then, the student feeling about communication was prevalent as well. And more things that stood out that I didn't mention as much was, there were several students mentioning mental health concerns and feeling that the school didn't, didn't do enough to support that, not a ton, but there were some. And again, going back to bullying, which was in the challenge, I feel like that's something that, I'm not sure what can be done to address that, but I feel like that should be looked into because I was just surprised to see that that's still an issue and that that's something that's a challenge that students feel like they are not getting adequate support to address. And so, that to me is made... a challenge that students feel like they are not getting adequate support to address. And so that to me is an major issue. Sarah, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I know.
May I ask one more question? On this the student support for more club time. Jackson, did they change the day or the time of when the club's time are is allowed? Is that something that has happened?
They have not done that yet, to my knowledge. Have they to your knowledge?
Typically, it's on Fridays, but I've, I mean, throughout the course of this year, I've only had three club times. So it's kind of hard to really run a club in like 30 minute spans. By the time people sit down and then you take attendance and then there's also the new members that come in, we had a great number of freshmen come in. And by the time you introduce all the people on your leadership, club time's over. And with at least SCA, we're doing a lot of events and we need to get, it's more important to get the information out, but there's also no foundational time for us to build on our club. So having more time would be really helpful.
And is there a student or excuse me, a teacher advisor for each club? Do you have to have that? Okay.
In order to have a club, you have to have an advisor.
I thought so.
And part and like part of the issue I know with club time and why it gets canceled is usually due to coverage issues. And one thing that this isn't from the survey, but just from conversations with teachers and students is that Fridays are a day that a lot of teachers tend to be out on. And so moving the club time day to Wednesday or a different day other than Friday could help make it happen more often because then there won't be as many coverage issues.
I remember you had to let us know about that last time when you spoke. I think that's a good idea that we should explore. And I just want to thank you both for a great presentation. And again, Jackson, your insight into how things work and how people think and taking the time to allow our students to think about their answers rather than just check a box. Very appreciate that. So thank you both so much.
Thank you. And I will share the answers with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to congratulate you guys on an amazing presentation. It takes a lot of work to compile all this data. Took a lot of time and effort and, you know, that does not go unnoticed. So congratulation, congratulation on your graduation.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing where you end up. And Sarah, the torch is now passed to you. Congratulations.
And I would just add one more thing. So Jackson, always super job. Yeah, you got that. Look forward to seeing what you're doing in the future. That's that's the exciting part for me. So but anyway, but the first this first information gathering is the most difficult because no one knows what it is yet. So what happens from it? So as Ms. Quinton said, the torch has been passed to you. So, you know, I kind of challenge you a little bit, continue the process through Ms. Jay. You know, communication was a big key in some of the feedback. We'll continue the communication. And then as you see obstacles, Ms. Jay is a tremendous advocate for you. And she will help you remove some of those barriers of communication as well. But we need you guys to lead in your school, lead. It's your school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Great job, Jackson. Sarah, thank you guys very much. Okay, next we'll bring our STEM coordinator, Ms. Sarver, and our technology director, Greg Hill, to the podium. And we are gonna do our next step, our fourth strategic plan update. And so Jess, Greg, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Hornick, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Before we get started, shameless plug for one of our drone teams because I'm very proud of them. You can see in the picture that we chose.
So we'd like to give you an update on the fifth focus area, which is technology in our strategic plan. The first couple of slides that we've added here are really for reference. We're not going to go through it. But they're there for anyone that's looking at these materials online. So there is exactly what we're doing. That's strategy one and the objectives, I mean, the objective and then the strategies below. If you go to the next slide. And then here are our action steps, which we'll be referencing when we give you our update here. And you can go to the next. And there's strategy two, and then the action plans that we have currently in those areas. So that's really for reference as we go forward. And move on. And then one more. Another drone there. Yep.
So as we go through this, we didn't focus on our professional development because professional development had been focused on so heavily during the instructional update. So we focused a lot on the work that has been done. And so if you would like to know more about the professional development we've been doing in technology, you can refer back to that professional development that you were given during the instructional update. So we have been doing work on our digital citizenship and computer science plan. So we started that work this fall. And I think as you heard with some of our other core subjects, we had to put a pause to that because our VDOE has announced that they're releasing new standards. So that's happened with several of our other core subjects. So right now, those subject, those standards are in public comment. I put a link there in case you would like to in your free read, if you'd like to go read a little more about that. But right now that's in public comment. We're anticipating a timeline soon for that. But those standards are integrated into our other core subjects. So we have some of that done already, but we're at a pause until those new standards come out. So we're kind of anticipating that right now.
And those were definitely due for renewal. They were 2017 was the last time that those were put forth. And, you know, if you know anything about technology, you know how quickly it's changing. And we're going to get to that in our next topic, but it was time to do that. I'm glad we didn't get too far down the road with integration of those older standards into our curriculum because it just did not make sense to do all that work and then turn around and find out, well, gosh, they took out a majority of these things and we had to start from scratch again. So that was definitely the right move at the time.
But again, those are not standalone standards. Those are integrated into our core standards. And so that's, that's work we do during our curriculum work with those other core standards. And so a big part of our work this year has been with AI. I mean, that's a topic that we're hearing, a big topic all over the place. And in January, Governor Yonkin released information on kind of guidelines on integration in education. And we formed a committee. Actually, we had school board representation. We had K-12 representation. Every school had teachers that came. We had departments represented here. We had administrators. And we met, we went over articles. We had representatives from parents. We had a parent who was actually also a he was a college professor, actually. We talked about how we preserve academic integrity, but also leverage tools. We what else did we do? We talked about common misconceptions. We polled our parent advisories. We talked to students. So we've spent a lot of time gathering information for those groups.
We met for like four weeks in a row straight with this committee and it was great because I know a lot of other divisions have put forth policies right away. They got that memo from or the governor's order and just said, oh, well, we'll just throw a policy in place. But that that seemed like a quick and easy answer to it where there really needs to be an in depth discussion about how we are going to leverage this tool. Because it is a tool and as with any tool, you can use it correctly or you can use it improperly. And we want to make sure that it's being used correctly in our classrooms and by our teachers and our staff because it has far reaching applications. And we want to make sure that we are addressing all of those. So that said, we're going to add AI to our division acceptable use policy. And the work that we've done in those meetings is going to help to frame that in how we're going to put that forth. And we don't want it to just be a you don't use it in these ways. It's also a how do you use it properly? So, you know, that acceptable use policy is a pro and a con. It's you shouldn't be doing these things, but you should be doing the following in these ways. We're also developing division and school digital citizenship resource page. So as we get these materials put together, we will be putting up a page that will have links to resources forward. Yep, on the website for our teachers, our parents and students to reference. It seems like every day there's something new coming out. We like to stay on top of that and have that as a something that grows over time and is always being added to as new developments come out.
And what we hope is that those things that we develop would also be mirrored in our digital honor code and then also our positive behavior intervention and support so that our students are hearing that same language, our parents are seeing what we have our students seeing so that our language is very clear in all the different areas. But again, from that feedback we received, from the information that we received.
Yep. And as you notice, in the parentheses there is which strategy that these are currently working towards and the action step involved as well. So you can go back and look and see, okay, that was strategy two. There's the action step two that this is towards. All right. That's it. No, 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 one more. I'm sorry. I'm looking at that. I'm like, wait a minute. I thought we had another slide. Yeah, we did. So we have our technology advisory committee, which we're going to be forming in the fall. That will be composed of teachers, technology and testing resource teachers, our TTRTs, who represent each school. Also, parents, administrators, and we have planned for three set meetings in September, January, and March, but more as needed. And when we started down the AI road, we found very quickly that, oh, we're going to need to meet more than once on this topic. So we anticipate that we won't be meeting more than the three times. But we definitely wanted to make sure that, you know, three times a year, we do have these set meetings. The last topic is Blocksi, which I was interested to see on, I don't know if anybody caught it, but at the top it was have less restrictions on Chromebooks. This tool, Blocksi.
We saw it.
Yeah. Will hopefully do just that. I know that our dual enrollment students particularly struggle with being able to access materials that for a regular high school student might not be appropriate for content that might be on that site. But they do have to access these articles or things that are on a site that might otherwise be blocked. Blocksi is, you may have heard of GoGuardian, which is what students struggle with now. That is our filtering software. We have to do that in order to utilize our E-rate funds from the federal government. We have to have filtering in place. Unfortunately, it's not an exact science and sites that students need to get to are sometimes blocked. Currently, we have a procedure in place where teachers can contact the technology department and we're very quick to monitor this and correct those blocks. But it takes time and it's a third party getting involved. It's us having to respond to a teacher requested this. This new filtering solution, Blocksi, works very similar to GoGuardian, but it gives the teachers much more control within the classroom. During classroom time, they can actually unblock a site for students to use while in class. When they leave that class, then that would be closed back down. But if they're studying a topic and they have key terms that they want to be researching or have students get to without getting those blocks in place, the teacher has that ability to make that decision and still be monitoring where those students are going, but allow that freedom to open up certain sites. Now, there are still things that we would always block. A teacher can't unlock certain areas, but we do allow for a greater freedom in that. Along with this, there will be parent sessions offered because there is a parent component to it where parents can at home say you're not going to the following things. You're not going to stay up till two in the morning watching YouTube because I'm blocking that. So they have the ability to put those same types of filters in place at home for their students and limit their access on their school devices. So we're very excited about that. And it also has a component to monitor and alert our administration when there are concerns for student searches or for emails or sites that are being visited by students that might set off a flag. They would then get a notification for that. So it was, it's a great solution. I think it's going to add a lot more control at the ground level for our teachers to really leverage our technology better in the classroom as well as put that parent piece in place and give them the control at home as well. And it was cheaper as well. So while GoGuardian is a good tool, they've kind of become stagnant. I see them you know, trying to add additional apps and functionality, but it's, it's not making their product, their base product any better. It's just, let's pile on other things. So they've really kind of reached their level. This company is newer, but they are very responsive at this point to new ideas and building the program to be more what teachers need in the classroom. So we're very excited about that as well.
Wow, thank you, guys. I have a couple of questions. The first one, when should we expect to see the policies that you guys are updating? When do you plan on presenting those?
So that's summer work that we are working on over the summer to do. So and we'll bring that to you for approval and for you to look at and see.
Ideally, it would be in the summer. So it's in place because this will likely be some addition to policy language with a subsequent regulation, which is where really where the rubber is going to hit the road as far as the implementation. So ideally, it would be at a time where it's in place for at or very close to the beginning of the school year.
Yep.
To follow up with that, I know cell phones have been a big thing for, I've heard from teachers, from students, from parents, everybody. And I don't know what the best course of action is to be brunt. I know parents want their kids to have access to their phones, but I also know that phones are a severe distraction in the classroom. And I also have heard that teachers enjoy allowing cell phones to be a perk for, you know, downtime or free time in the classroom. So I, with weighing all of those, I do think, I do agree that cell phones are a distraction. I don't know how to combat that. But if that's something that we could look towards moving forward, I think that would benefit all parties involved. And then with the technology advisory committee, I don't know if you all would be open to us either having appointees on your committee as well or having board members participate, but that's definitely something I would be interested in exploring as well with you guys.
As far as cell phones, that would probably form fall more in the purview of that committee. It's not part of our strategic plan at this point. I mean, that wasn't one of the focus areas. But that would definitely be a topic for discussion with that committee.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say thank you for, it's good to hear about the thoughtful care and consideration and not just rushing forward. To me, the world of AI is both incredibly exciting and absolutely terrifying all at the same time. And so I'm glad to hear that we've really been thoughtful about about doing this. I wonder what's in place for, and I, you know, you know, technology is not my thing, but what about like chat? You know, write me an essay for my senior class project and it sounds like me and it's something I would say. Do we have some sort of system in place for how to catch those sorts of things? Are students just so great at it that they can work around us every time?
There are very many tools. And if they want to go down that path and use that, it's very hard to detect with accuracy. So what we need to do is leverage that tool as a please, you know, you can use this in the following ways, but we want you to focus on your own voice and writing for the next part. None of the detection is 100% accurate. So you have to be very, very cautious with that. In our discussions and in our meetings, it was brought up that we need to look at how we're designing our lessons to use that tool to allow it for certain portions, but not for others. And to be very thoughtful in that and to create lessons that can't be used with ChatGPT. And you can go and ask those tools and make me a lesson plan where this would not be an effective tool to use and it will tell on itself. And it will tell on itself, so to speak.
It's gonna be our teachers we have to watch out for.
Well, I think a lot of this comes back to what Jackson said. We talk about cell phones. The number one factor is consistent implementation.
Correct.
And sometimes we set ourselves up in our buildings. If Ms. Jamerson is hammering it every minute and the teacher next door is not, that sets up Ms. Jamerson for failure. Right? And so that's a problem. Going back to your question, as far as Greg is right, what we won't be able to do is have some magic program that we will be able to catch a student in the act of cheating or whatever at the, at the end. It needs to be part of the actual writing and revising process, right? And so as you continue to refine your work and improve and you pre-write and you write and you revise and you, you meet with the teacher, it needs to be worked in there and then opportunities to correct anything that might be getting flagged. And so by the time that final document is turned in, we expect it to be all completely above board. And so a mixture of doing in-class activities where you, you manage the access to the device or devices is one. And then if it is something that is more of an elongated project or, or topic that you're having kids working on, really the work is in, it's really in the process, particularly when you're talking about writing in particular, the writing process, right? Your pre-write, then you're writing your rough draft, you're meeting with the teacher, you're going back and making revisions. And that's a wonderful opportunity for a teacher to come back and say, hey, in this paragraph, it, you know, it flagged 20% of this portion of your paper as potential AI. To be quite honest, whether it is or not really isn't the point. It needs to be cleaned up, right? And so there's no real point in arguing it's, let's get it cleaned up before we're at the end of the game. And that, that's where we can't go to because that's a no-win situation. Because all of the products tell you right up at the front, the disclaimer, this is not a 100%, it is not 100% accurate as far as being able to detect or not detect artificial intelligence. And so we should not use it as such. And as, as ChatGPT goes, now we have four out and one, five and six and seven and eight and infinity come out, the ability to scrub. And it's just going to, as the parameters grow, right, for you tech guys, as the parameters of the technology grow, it becomes essentially limitless in its capacity. And so that's where the process and thoughtful design of assessment and lessons will, will have to come in.
And just a thought, is there a way to screen out AI access websites or track the website's usage per Chromebook?
So it's not just like four major players. There are hundreds, if not thousands now, of AI websites that will function to varying degrees. But there are just too many of them. It's, it's whack-a-mole. You know, you knock this one down. Also, that doesn't prevent a student who has a unfiltered computer at home to then use those, those same kind of tools. So the short answer is no, we can't filter all of those out. But as Dr. Hornick said, you know, thoughtful lesson design and instruction in the classroom and using it as a tool throughout the assignment is the way to go rather than an end use of, oh, we know you use that and, you know, we're, we're gonna get on you for it because it flagged at the end. We want to make sure that the process goes along and that we're, we're looking at it along the way.
If, if I could, great job, good presentation. Look forward to your work from the summer. You had referenced Governor Yonkin. Has the state of Virginia put together a committee or an advisory panel? They have.
So he released a statement and there's a, an executive order and a document they put out on the use in education. And, and I believe it came out, I wrote the date down, on January 18th, I believe is the date that all of his documents came out.
So you put out an executive order. What, what, more of my question is, is there a group or a committee? Germana, Piedmont Power, UVA, JMU, Mary Washington, we cannot be the only ones facing. I, I know sitting here listening to you, I had about 50 questions go through my head. And where I started is what Ms. Dawson said. It's very exciting, but it's scary. It's some scary stuff.
Well, and it's the pace that it's moving too, because the anniversary for ChatGPT, one year anniversary was in December, I believe. So it, it's just moving at an exponential rate. So to your point and what, what you're doing, we're all struggling with this to, to catch up and to kind of get on top of it. I am not aware of any state group at, at present that's offering guidance to this, so.
Or a university, you know, maybe a university, maybe if you guys, again, it's, it's your project for the summer. But if we can look at some of the universities and see what these guys are doing, you know, kind of outside the box. And, and again, I agree with Dr. Hornick. It's not really about, you know, how, you're not gonna stop technology, but it is about the process. So anyway, thank you all for your hard work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question for you. Sorry. I was trying to let everybody else speak before I did anything. The question that I had, and, and this may be, may go back to the educational aspect of it. But as far as specifically in K through five, limiting the amount of time that they're on the Chromebook and obviously also in the high school primary and high school or the middle and high school level as well. But getting down to a certain amount of time that they're allowed on it and then implementing more of actual paper to that aspect, is that something you're also looking into as well or is that for the other strategic committee? For the educational side?
I mean, I think all our committees, I mean, we're a small division, so we're all working together on this.
It's gonna overlap with instruction considerably in particular.
Certainly K two, we work to get them as.
Little as possible.
Yeah. But, but that's definitely what we work on during our curriculum work. K five, definitely, but absolutely.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
And the Blocksi allows with that too, because the teacher can just say boop and now nothing. You know, you're not going anywhere.
Sure. Absolutely.
Or just close it.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Greg, Jessica, thank you all very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
If it's okay with the board, we'd like to call a five-minute recess if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thank you, Dr. Hornick.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Moving on to board member items. A is ATI presentation. I will hand that over to Ms. Dawson.
Thank you. I would like to introduce to you Alcinda Hatfield, who is the Community Engagement Director for ATI, Anti-Trafficking International. And I'm gonna limit my comments until she's had a chance to share and then we'll have a chance for discussion. Thank you, Alcinda, for being here.
Thank you so much for having me, Dr. Hornick and Madam Chairman, Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. My father was actually served on the Board of Education many decades ago, long before technology was a thing. And he would be on the phone for hours every night with parents, teachers, and, you know, meetings that went very, very late into the night. So I have a great appreciation for everything that you all are doing here tonight. And it's an honor to be able to come and speak before you regarding the Just Ask Prevention curriculum. You can go ahead and move to the next slide. And as I said, my name is Alcinda Hatfield. I am a volunteer with ATI. And so just to give you a little background about Anti-Trafficking International, it was originally just the Just Ask Prevention Project, which was created back in 2013 in conjunction with a federally funded regional task force. It was the first school that was a participant in this program was Fairfax County Schools. The initial focus was to provide awareness education to the community. A big part of the program is peer-to-peer education, bystander empowerment. And so our program has been implemented since 2015. And if, just to give you a little history about human trafficking in the state of Virginia. And federally, in the year 2000, human trafficking was identified as a federal crime, a federal offense. So that was the year 2000. It took 15 years. It wasn't until 2015 that the state of Virginia actually considered or created a Virginia statute making human trafficking a crime in Virginia. So our, our program, you know, our organization goes back quite a few years. Technology has really, you can move to the next slide. The problem with, with human trafficking is a lot of what was just presented in the technology and the AI. You know, technology continues to leapfrog ahead of the ability to really fight human trafficking. And we might think that in this area, more of a rural area, this wouldn't be a problem. But the fact that everyone, just about every young person has a phone or access to a phone opens the door to human traffickers. I know when I was a child, we had the ad on TV that said, it's 10 o'clock. Do you know where your children are? And today, your children don't have to leave home because that's not where the danger, a lot of times, the, the harm and the danger is right in the home with the child, right in the school system. We know there's a lot of human trafficking that goes on in the public school system. So also, human trafficking, it is the second only to drug trafficking. It's the largest criminal enterprise. And a lot of people think, oh, this is never gonna happen in my community, that no child that I know will ever be affected by exploitation, sexual exploitation, or even labor trafficking. But actually, that's probably the most dangerous myth because we have a general comfortable sense that our children are safe. And the reality is, is that many parents, many teachers have no idea what young people are viewing online, who they're interacting with because just like, you know, spreading seed, broadcasting, and we have, you know, radio broadcasts, things like that. But the internet creates such an opportunity for, as we just heard in the, just the past presentation, that technology can be used for incredibly awesome things, but also for incredibly bad and evil things. So young people are at great risk because of the fact that young people are generally very inclusive, trusting. And so there are many, many predators in person and online. But the problem is, is that the online threat is just so much greater now, which, which means that, you know, we need to have, unfortunately, as I said, when my father was on the Board of Education, they were never talking about anything like this. This would have never been a conversation that they would have had. And technology probably wouldn't have been the big conversation either. But, you know, kids, there, we teach our kids to protect themselves from all kinds of things. And this is just one more, that we have to educate them. We know that 95, we know that education is very effective and that 95% of sexual abuse can be prevented through education. And so we want to take advantage of that. And we also want to stress, I want to stress the fact that, you know, a lot of people, when they hear anti-trafficking education or human trafficking about the topic, people get very uncomfortable very quickly. And a lot of people say, well, I want to opt my child out. This is, sounds like sex education, things like that. It's nothing of the sort. It is prevention education. Anything in our curriculum is, is not graphic. Your children, children, students are, are seeing far more. far more graphic information in just day-to-day, what they watch on Netflix or anything else that they're streaming. The curriculum is very appropriate and age and age sensitive. So you can go to the next slide, please. So our prevention education curriculum, EPI stands for Education, Prevention, and Intervention, because we know that when children do are exposed to this type of information, there are children that do come forward. So we equip schools with information on what to do if that happens, but I'm just explaining what EPI stands for. Again, it's Education, Prevention, and Intervention. So we present true stories that demonstrate what human trafficking looks like, because a lot of people, even young people, many young people, they don't, you know, the word "human trafficking" really doesn't make a lot of sense, particularly to young children. But, you know, our curriculum is from sixth through grade 10, grade six through 10, but we have true stories that demonstrate what the process looks like. And we know that stories are very, very helpful in learning. And so we also provide language that gives young people to the ability to describe what's happening, if exploitation or just even the process of grooming were to occur, that students can then recognize, and then they can speak out and speak up. Oh, this looks like what we just discussed. There's a student that was in Loudoun County that was, went through our, the Just Ask curriculum, and she was in a situation where she worked at a retail store, young man came in, introduced himself, over time, they became very good friends, started dating, he was a bit older than her, she didn't really realize exactly how much older he was, but she was very flattered because he was paying attention to her. She was going through the, her, in her school, they presented the Just Ask curriculum, and she was like, oh, my goodness, this sounds a lot like what I'm experiencing, where there's suddenly an emergency and money needs to be gotten, and if you will just do this, then I'll get my money, and then we won't have to break up. And she was like this, she went to her teacher and reported what happened, and was able to ident, the police were called in, the young man was actually arrested, he was not a student in the school, but she was being groomed to be trafficked. And so through the, having gone through the curriculum, she was actually protected and knew who to go to with questions. So the the discussion that ensues in the classroom, as well as peer-to-peer, is very, very important in this training program, and then identifying the source of protection and help that students can go to. So you can go to the next slide, please. So implementation, you know, just a lot of what I was just saying, but the, one of the first things that we would encourage with the Just Ask curriculum implementation would be more of a community engagement, where we would offer parent sessions, so that parents can be exposed to the curriculum, ask questions, have the opportunity to opt out if they feel like it's not appropriate for their child. We also encourage having educational forums with the community involving law enforcement as partnering with the school system as well as students. So what we want to create is more of a collaborative effort in fighting human trafficking. As far as the program itself, it's very sustainable, it's cost-effective, it's a cost-effective model that's easy to implement. It's basically four, excuse me, two 45-minute sessions or one 90-minute session once a year, and it's iterative learning. So you go through it sixth grade, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th. So each year it builds on the language in the classroom. Each year's story is different, and as I said, they're all true stories, there's nothing fictional about it. So it gives students the understanding of this is what's actually happening, this is what could happen, and this is what you do to prevent this from happening. It has been reviewed, our program has been reviewed by survivors of human trafficking, as well as students who've gone through the program, and ATI has our Student Advisory Board, where they also review our curriculum to keep it up to date. And it's not really, you know, you can, you can use the curriculum in a way that best suits your school system. In other words, as I said, it can be either one 90-minute session or two 45-minute sessions. You can use the story with PowerPoints or with just a recording. It's it's very easy to implement. Go to the next slide, please. So the results, we do know that it works in the sense of increasing the knowledge, that children learn what, you know, human trafficking is, as far as their ability to identify resources and get help. Also, I think it's very important, the cultural shift and understanding the systemic causes in human trafficking. You know, we talked, what was, I noted in some of the presentations earlier, like the school, the free, free lunches, free breakfasts, things like that. One of the things that we have to understand about the world we live in today, particularly from COVID on, you know, to more present, it's just a lot of economic difficulties that people are experiencing. A lot of people lost their jobs during COVID, and what we find is that money is a problem. Human trafficking is a very, very easy way to make money, particularly with young people, because they are very vulnerable, they're very easily influenced, particularly when there's peer pressure involved and things like that. So bullying is another thing. Learning about sextortion, which is is a part of bullying, where, you know, it's very common for young people to share nudes, you know, if you want to date, a lot of times they're sharing nudes to decide if they want to date this person or not. And so helping them, helping young people understand really boundaries for them, for themselves, what's useful information to share online, what's not helpful to share online. Remember to think before you send anything, the fact that it's it's basically cannot be removed very easily from the Internet, once you send photos and things like that. So also, just helping people understand, helping you understand, as I was saying, just the the fact that money, because money is so much more of an issue, that human trafficking is much more prevalent, and it's only growing. There are a number of reasons for that. A lot of it has to do with technology. The ubiquitous nature of pornography and things like that has created a much greater demand for victims of human trafficking, and that, of course, puts our young people at greater and greater risk. So another thing that's important to understand is that the fastest, the fastest-growing demographic for human trafficking is familial trafficking. And that's someone that the victim is familiar with, whether it's a family member or a friend, could be a teacher, it could be a pastor, someone in the community that they are familiar with, and then that trusting relationship. And so we want children to be able to identify the signs of grooming and what that looks like, so that they are, you know, even, you know, they're taught if something doesn't feel right, it's probably not right, you know, so trust your gut. If your spidey senses are up, we don't use that language in the program, but, you know, we want young people to identify what the signs of human trafficking are, so that they can be protected. Next slide, please. So, as I said, the, the, the program is very economical in the sense that, you know, when you compare it to the cost of recovery for a human trafficking survivor, which is about $250,000, if you know anything about human trafficking victims, they, they have a lot of mental health issues, drug-related issues, and they don't start out that way. A lot of times, a young person can be trafficked, and they're sleeping in their own bed every night, they're going to class every day, you don't know it. Over time, the decline occurs, then you start seeing a lot more truancy and things like that. But we want to intervene well beyond, you know, the the case where we have a survivor who requires this type of assistance. So there's no additional cost to the school for staffing. We include training of all teachers, administrators, counselors, that's all part of the program cost, as including parent nights, and all the materials are electronically provided to the school, and it is a self-sustaining program. So you don't need any outside help to implement the program. Next slide, please. Our curriculum, it was designed and continues to be updated by professional career, curriculum developers. It is, as I said, based on actual case studies, case examples, and, yeah, I pretty much said everything, we could just keep going. I know you, you don't want to stay here and hear the same thing over and over again. So as I said, sixth through grade 10. All of our grade levels fulfill the Family Life Education Standards of Learning requirements, and actually exceed them. Next slide, please. I think you all probably got a lot of this information prior to tonight's meeting, so. As I said, we introduce the topic for each grade level, there are key terms or vocabulary that they're introduced to, then they're, they have the story, and then there's discussion time, and then the conclusion of the story, which is, you know, encapsulates that 90 minutes or two 45-minute sessions. Next slide, please. So the resonating themes, we want students to understand really the concept of consent, that's very confusing for a lot of young people, particularly in today's world, where it's, well, if you consent it, it's okay, but if you're under 18, that really doesn't apply to a lot of what happens in the world of human trafficking. So we want young people to really understand what consent means, and how, you know, anyone under the age of 18 also is a victim, would not, they would not actually be arrested if they reported that they were being trafficked, or that they were being groomed to be trafficked. So, you know, we want young people to have a voice, to be able to speak up. Choice, hope, community responsibility, respect, these are a lot of the things that we want to instill in young people, just so that they have a sense, a greater sense of autonomy and a sense of what it means to be safe. Next slide, please. Yeah, and Benjamin Franklin, I think he said it well, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." We are primarily, our focus is on prevention, we want to focus on keeping young people safe, and happy to answer any questions you might have. I was trying to condense all that and squeeze it in, knowing that there's time limit here.
I do have a couple. Do you know off the top of your head what school systems in Virginia have implemented this program? I know you said Fairfax.
Manassas City, Manassas Park, Loudoun, Fairfax, Warren, we're just now implementing in Warren, Stafford, we'll be training them, they'll be implementing in the fall, yeah.
That's interesting, they actually, up in Northern Virginia, they do have trafficking personnel now.
In the schools, yeah.
And then I got an email about this possibly being a religious program, is there any kind of religion or anything implemented?
Absolutely not. This is a public school, this is a secular program, and, you know, with the way the world is today, there's, there's no way that we could get a religious program into a public school system. So this is a purely secular program with the emphasis on human trafficking prevention.
And then my final question, parents, do they have the ability to review the curriculum before it's presented to their child?
They do, mm-hmm. Yeah, as I said, Warren County is implementing now before the end of the school year. We had a parent night with them. The the curriculum was online and accessible within the, I guess there's a parent portal that parents can review, they was, there was a 30-day period where parents could review all the curriculum, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all. Madam Chair.
And our hope would be that, you know, as I said, that we could, we could, we would be happy to work with, you know, the school, with the, with the board, and with the county school system to to have a community outreach that could be a part of it, where we, you know, one of the things that ATI does, where we will offer a panel presentation, including maybe a partner organization, like Reset 180, that that helps victims, so that if somebody does come forward and say, "This sounds a lot like what my child is experiencing," then we have people there that can help them immediately, as well as law enforcement. So we like to include the community in this type of a program, because, you know, this is a problem that, as a community, we have to address. We can't depend on law enforcement exclusively, because we know law enforcement is overworked, underpaid, and as I said, human trafficking, I like to use the analogy of a tractor, I'm, I have a farm, I live on a farm, and if you think about the first John Deere that came out in 1936, or whenever that was, it was kind of a jalopy. And if you look at tractors today, they're very high-tech, they're very sophisticated, they're very expensive, and that's human trafficking. It's a machine, it's a money-making enterprise, and it's evolving. And so we have to, as a community, come together to fight human traffickers, because it is a criminal enterprise, and it's like a machine, it's improving. And we're behind the curve, you know, law enforcement's behind the curve, because it is evolving so, so rapidly, because, as I said, it's a, it's the, it's the second-largest criminal enterprise in the world. So we have to, as a community, really come together to fight this. It's not something that we can just say, okay, teachers, it's your job, okay, law enforcement, it's your job. So that's why we like to engage more than just, you know, the school system.
Okay to go? Thanks for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome.
First and foremost, thanks for being here. So the first school that is in the program, that would be Loudoun?
Fairfax County.
Fairfax County was the first one. How long have they been in?
They've been in ever since, and and I would say that, you know.
Since 2013?
15.
2015, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's up to each school as far as how they implement, how how much of the program they actually use. We've heard from some students that some schools aren't using the curriculum, some are. So I think it was sort of what, like what Jackson said, you know, as far as implementation, like just even with the standards, whatever the, the, you know, rules are, do this, don't do that, if the next teacher isn't doing it, you know, so, but that is, Fairfax County was the first, and they are still one of our schools, yeah.
Do you know any, off the top of your head, not going to fact-check, any statistical information, like human trafficking in the state of Virginia? Any idea?
Well, here's the problem with human trafficking, less than 1% of victims identify. Only 0.4% of those actually go through the legal system or social services. So what we do know is that it is a growing problem, particularly with younger people, younger and younger victims, what we're finding are young, you know, younger and younger victims. The average age of a human trafficking victim is 11 to 15. These are young children, so.
Babies.
Yeah, and, but it can go up, and it can go down. So this is, this is the difficulty in providing you with statistics, because of the fact that there are children walking around who are being exploited, and they don't know it. They blame themselves, you know, and they do not have the understanding of what's happening to them to be able to go out and say, "This is happening." Another one of the myths is that, well, if if somebody tried to traffic me, I'd just run away. But there's so much psychological manipulation that goes on, that process of grooming, where a young person, or even an adult, I mean, adults can be trafficked as well, where there's trust established, and so, you know, the process is grooming, manipulation, and then trapping. And so the grooming, you know, could be, could be a matter of days, or it could be a matter of months, or even years, where you're establishing that relationship. You know, manipulation is a form of, you know, just giving presents, a cellphone, that's the problem, you know, we talked about cellphones earlier this evening, and managing Chromebooks and things like that. A lot of parents don't understand, they'll say, well, I'm taking away your phone, I don't like who you're communicating with, they don't understand the trafficker's already given them another phone, they don't care, they don't care, and that's a gift, that's like, oh, you're, you're awesome, you're great. And so that's a very common part of the grooming process, is to give them communication, some kind of way that they can stay in communication with their victim.
I, I'm struggling with trying to get my head around, do I, I'm a person that believes that you need to be out in front and have, you know, I liked the first part of your presentation, you got to have the tough conversation, and don't stick your hand, a friend of mine said, "Don't stick your head in the sand."
Right.
And pretend that it doesn't, you know, it's not happening, because it is. How do you implement? Because it seems to me, you referenced Jackson's presentation a little earlier, I go to mental health.
It's a big part of it. Big part of it.
Right. So it seems to be, you know, do you do work with the CSBs in the state of Virginia, or is it just the school systems, or, like, how do you?
So the Just Ask curriculum is primarily for public school systems, yeah. So the Just Ask curriculum is primarily for public school systems, yeah. And, you know, so the mental health is a really big, big part of the overall problem, though our curriculum is not a mental health curriculum. It's really specifically focusing on human trafficking. But I think that we have to understand that mental health contributes to the process of grooming, which isolates people from the safe people.
Why you become vulnerable.
Which is why you become vulnerable. So, and technology, as I said, has a big, big part of this. So, you know, but this curriculum specifically is human trafficking, preventing human trafficking. And that can look, that takes many, many forms. That's the other complex issue of human trafficking because even a presentation, a program that we led just last week, last Thursday, when we had a sheriff there who gave a presentation, he was talking about all the panhandlers. Many of those people are trafficked victims. You know, they come into this country, or they come from different parts of the United States, and they, you know, get picked up by a trafficker. There may be housed many people in one house, maybe in a fancy community, maybe even in a gated community. And so you might see a lady on the street with two kids. She doesn't know those kids. They've just put them together for the day and said, "You're going to be here eight hours. Bring home money." And so human trafficking can take many, many different forms. It's not just the Romeo trafficker, though that's what a lot of school-age children will experience, the boyfriend or girlfriend. And it can be boys and girls who are trafficked, not just girls.
And I don't want to monopolize your time. The only additional thing I would add is, is if you could give, what I would like to see is, you had referenced before, some divisions have done a good job implementing the program and some haven't. Examples of, you know, how, because it seems to me like the statistics and the analytics are very difficult. You alluded to it.
Very.
But I would like to know, you know, what school systems did really well and why?
Implementation, yeah, the curriculum. Sure, sure. Yeah, and we could, we could provide you with some contacts of some of the teachers who have used the curriculum. Sure, yeah, absolutely. I think that's really helpful.
We have a great relationship with, the superintendent has a terrific relationship with the law, the local sheriff, our law enforcement here. It seems to me like, you know, he needs to be a part of the conversation as well. And again, I thank you for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions?
If I could just wrap it up with why I, I'm sorry. I thought you said you were...
I was getting ready to, but I jumped in.
Were you going to talk about the presentation? I was just going to...
You might answer questions that I have.
I was just going to say that the reason I invited Ms. Hatfield to come tonight, she probably doesn't even remember, about a year ago, I was at one of your community forums in Madison County with Virginia State Police and Madison County Sheriffs, and a presentation by families of Virginia students who were victims.
Yes.
And it was absolutely heartrending. And it's so easy, as you said, Jack, to just stick our heads in the sand and pretend that this isn't happening, especially not here in sweet little Orange County. I did talk to Sheriff Smith, and he said he's not aware of a trafficking issue in our county, other than some of the digital concerns, which of course, you're going to address. Then I went to another presentation in Culpeper County, Culpeper County Police and Virginia State Police, and families who had been victimized. And then I did an online training with a school board, specifically for school board members, about the curriculum being able to come into the school division. And what I like about it is that it's education and prevention. So I hope Sheriff Smith is right that we're not having this issue in Orange County. I don't want us ever to have this issue in Orange County. And I think that this would help us get there and educate our children. I think the next step, as I envision it, is to get with Sheriff Smith and our SROs, get Dr. Honigur involved with our secondary education director, and have a small group meeting to talk about it, and then perhaps a community forum, and then a decision about, is it something Orange County would like to implement? And I appreciate your time. Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I'll say, that's a great strategy because, you know, it can be a staged process, you know. It doesn't have to be you implement the curriculum in the fall. You know, we can, we can work with you. You know, a lot of what we do is just community outreach because we, our goal is to protect young people because we have seen the harms, and it's devastating. It's not only devastating for the child or the victim, it's tremendously devastating for the family and the community because it's a ripple. I like to say it's a tsunami. People say ripple effect. It's really a tsunami. It takes whole families out, and it's incredibly difficult to recover from. Yeah. So thank you for your time and attention.
Another issue that always comes up is budgeting.
Yeah.
And I believe it was in the school board presentation, one of, I forget which school board member said that their Rotary Club actually helped fund theirs, and it was in, like, in the neighborhood of $5,000 or something.
That's correct.
I guess it depends on the size of the division, but it's not like a break-the-bank sort of...
No, not at all. No. We're not in this to make money. There's absolutely no money in prevention education. There's a lot of money in human trafficking, but not a lot of money in prevention.
I just wanted to make that point because...
Yeah, that's correct. That was Warren County, who, their two local Rotary Clubs funded implementation, and that's a three-year contract for $5,000. So it's pretty minimal when you compare, you know, the per-student cost. That's, I think, a pretty comparable school system, school district size, yeah.
Thank you again for being here. Appreciate your time, and thank you, Board, for your attention.
Yeah, thank you.
I actually did have something I would like to say.
Sure, sure.
That's okay. Sorry for the confusion. First of all, I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Dawson for bringing this presentation and discussion forward to the entire board in a public forum. I recognize that this may be an area of grave worldwide and national concern, and state and potentially county, although what you said about Sheriff Smith, I appreciate that information. I also think that this deserves further discussion and consideration, and I'm going to address that in just a moment. First, however, I do have significant concerns regarding this board majority's continued circumvention of our authorities', responsibilities', and obligations as defined in the Constitution of Virginia, Article 7, Section 7, and Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, 22.1-71.
Is this a question directed at her, or can we dismiss her now the discussion?
I would ask a question and then finish this, then?
Yes, please.
Would you like to ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
You said that you are not any Christian or religious organized organization group. You don't have that type of information within your curriculum that you provide.
Correct.
My question was, you were presented as a volunteer, I believe, or as a coordinator?
I am a volunteer, that's correct.
And if you look at the ATI website, it lists you as the director of faith-based curriculum. So I want to just clarify...
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. So we're a very small organization, and mostly volunteers. So we do have a pilot program that is a faith-based program. That is not the Just Ask curriculum. That's another curriculum altogether. And it's geared toward faith-based communities, youth groups, churches, things like that, because we do know that human trafficking, it happens everywhere. And so our goal is to protect vulnerable communities, no matter what their religious affiliation is, whether they're, you know, whatever LGBTQ. We know that that's also a very vulnerable population. You know, we know that traffickers are what we call equal-opportunity abusers. So the fact that we have a pilot curriculum that's for faith-based communities does not represent ATI or this curriculum as a whole. We are not a religious organization. There are other ones who are very vocal about being faith-based, but ATI is, for the most part, a secular organization. But we do have offerings, just like we offer training, professional training for airline industry, retail industry, anyone that's coming in contact with the public. You know, we would want to be able to train them to identify the signs of human trafficking, the red flags, so that people understand what to do when they see it. It's just like when a person has a heart attack, not, excuse me, when they have heart pains, you know, chest pains, we say, "Go to the emergency room." We don't say, "Ignore that." And it's the same with this. If you see something, report it. Don't think you're bothering law enforcement. That's why they're there. So, you know, we want people to be educated, no matter what their demographic is.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield.
I will finish my statement, and then I'll give it back. Thank you. So in addition, these members are consciously and actively choosing to ignore or circumvent Orange County Public Schools Division's own board policies and administrative regulations when it suits their purpose. This also violates the commitments we agreed to, as defined within the Board Member's Code of Conduct. Conduct, excuse me. I am once again respectfully asking this board to follow a defined process that protects the integrity of governance. If there is an item of interest a member or group has, the course of action should be to discuss it under Board Act comments or present it under future agenda items. This process allows a comprehensive discussion and requests for specific information to be included when the presentation or board discussion item is brought forward in a public forum. I do believe the issue of sex trafficking is worthy of discussion. It is only through research, deliberation, and exploration of viable options or alternatives that the board will be able to develop an appropriate course of action for Orange County Public School students, parents, and staff. Fortunately, as this is the end of our school year, we have a window of time to explore the issue further, including our current curriculum. So at this time, I would request our board to authorize the administration to research whether alternatives, such as those offered through Anti-Trafficking International, provide a value added for our students and community. This includes program costs, training, curriculum, professional development, additional resources, and support, including what may be offered and compared to that through the Virginia Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We're all good. Move on. Next, we have CIP CTE building expansion discussion. Would you like to start?
This is probably more for the board than anywhere else. So the last meeting, we discussed a concept for CTE structure to be located on campus. It seems to be we're at the stage where we need to do some engineering and some design work. It falls under the superintendent's responsibilities to execute that. I would like for us to give him the confidence to say that we were behind him in doing this through this discussion.
Just to clear up a few things, I know there were some things floating around from the last board meeting that we had approved something already. We are still in the option phases. We're looking at, obviously, a building that we would be putting on campus. The location of that building, we need to understand from an engineering or architectural firm, whether different locations would be suitable for this building. There's other alternatives, you know, there's cost involved for that. There's cost involved for other alternatives. But we want to make sure that we're making the best decision. And for the amount of money that we will be asking from the taxpayers and the board supervisors, we want to make sure that that money is implemented appropriately, and we also want to improve the overall feel and look of our schools. You know, I've made it clear that, you know, I personally would like to see something that's attached to the building, giving it more of a, you know, campus feel versus an outbuilding. But, you know, those are things that we need to determine through an architectural firm or engineering firm, or even looking at other alternatives, whether it's a design-build firm, getting companies to come out and give us ideas of what we could do and what would be best for our schools. So just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that there was no decision made as of yet, so.
Well, one of the reasons why we're having this discussion is to make a decision tonight. We do need to, again, it falls under the superintendent's purview to move forward. We have a concept, and we need engineering and design, which means we do have to spend money to do that. With so many questions going around, I think both of us felt it was pertinent to have this conversation in this setting, so we can give clear direction to the superintendent of the path that we would like to move forward. So I don't know if we want to just take the pulse of every member, but RRM, so Timmins is on retainer from Orange County. The school system doesn't have anything to do with that. That is on retainer from the county. So we will use Timmins to do the engineering study. RRMM has done our last, Dr. Hornick, correct me if I'm wrong, six? I don't even want to say out loud how many we've done. Six, five studies?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. So I think we were able to go forward with a concept that basically achieves a few goals that we had in mind. We have a budget. We need to stay within our budget. We are overcrowded in our high school. This plan limits or addresses those concerns in a quick period of time. And then we create new programs on campus for our students. Continuing to have these conversations and, "What about this? What about this? What about this?" I agree that we've spent too much money on designs. I don't disagree with you at all. But I think we've come up with a very comprehensive concept within a budget structure, and this design and engineering firm will tell us whether it's viable or not. So if every board member could let me know, or let the superintendent know your thoughts, and...
Well, I had a conversation last Friday with Dr. Hornick, and was informed that we are not at any point to be voting on anything. I believe that there is a better-suited option, and I would also like to explore that. I know I'm not on the CIP committee. I did have interest, but I decided to not throw my hat into the ring, so that way other members would have the ability to do so. But I also don't believe that my position has been fully represented in those committee meetings. And so I would also like to ask staff to, maybe, Dr. Hornick, you and I could have a meeting about my ideas, and I'm open to your schedule. I know you're busy. But I would like to explore another option that I'm not prepared to bring forward today, but I do believe that we have the ability to save millions of dollars while still having first-class education for CTE. So right now, I'm not in a position to vote on anything.
I'm not asking, not asking for a vote. I'm asking for, a good friend of mine said that the previous board used to kind of give a thumbs up or a thumbs down, you know, and we don't need to vote. He has the authority to do it. I feel like...
I guess maybe I'm not, I'm not catching on to doing what.
To sign a contract with an engineer and design firm to move forward, to see if this concept is viable.
I would like to see that contract, if we're giving a pulse. You know what I mean? I'm not prepared to give a position when I don't know what's in front of me.
Right. That falls under the superintendent's responsibilities.
Currently, the superintendent has that authority under policy.
Correct.
To enter into a contract depending on the amount. Is that correct, Jack?
Correct.
That's the defining factor?
Correct.
Okay.
So you would be not in favor?
I guess, because I don't know what I'm giving a pulse on.
Understand.
I am in favor. I think we need to see if this is feasible. That's the first step. We're not at the point of saying this building's going up. We're just figuring out, can it go up?
Correct.
Can it go there? Can we, can we do it? So I'm in favor of that step taking place.
Yeah.
I would absolutely support that step and ask the superintendent to go forward and take that, that action to see whether or not this is a viable, realistic opportunity for us to get a CTE building in, in a very short timeframe, so we could actually implement and get some of our trades profession classes going forward. And if it's not a viable option at this time, then we continue exploring the other options, including the TAC building that the chairperson would like to bring forward and has spoken about in the past. about in the past. But yeah, I think that we need to continue going forward. We have the Board of Supervisors, who I believe has provided support, at least theoretical support, in the funding level that they would be able to help us with without having to go out to taxpayers and ask for more money from taxpayers to support a bond or anything. And again, it would give us some leeway relative to the overcrowding issues and potential planning for another high school that we may need farther down the, the line from now. So I would support that.
I would just ask, Dr. Hornick, is there any specifics you would like to add regarding the, the groups that we're utilizing for the proposal, if you will?
Yes, so, a- as far as what we need right now is a, basically, a civil engineering firm to assess the feasibility of sites. And so, the one that logically comes to mind, but I, I would work with Doug to see, you know, a- as far as what group is going to give us the best, you know, rate to do it. But of course, you know, Tim Minns comes to mind because of, again, they're, they have quite a longstanding understanding of Orange County in, in general. And so that would be primarily the group. That really needs to be the first step, right? You, you, we have a concept of a facility where you could accomplish two goals. My hope would be that we could add enough classroom space in a, in a traditional manner by being able to move some CTE programs to this building that would hopefully at least cover the population growth that the Welton Cooper Center has put forward as far as what we're expected to see over the next 10 years. A, a key limitation to the Welton Coopers, Welton Cooper Center's demographics that, that you all have is that it is based on, basically, birth rates and current birth rates, and so even new homes and wilderness shores at this moment, right, in, in Phase Three aren't, that would be in addition to their projections. New homes in, in Round Hill would be in addition to their projections. And so, I would, I would really like a, a solution that could create 250, 300 seats for classrooms, classroom space, as well as give us enough room to put key lab areas with adjoining classrooms for the programs that we know we need here in Orange, within the trades. So that would be things like masonry, electricity, plumbing, HVAC, construction trades, carpentry, if you will. I think it would be, we, we, it would be really great to have auto, auto, auto tech in particular, where our students don't have to go to Culpeper from 6:00 to 10:00?
Four to 10:00.
Four to 10:00, okay, in, in, in the evening. I would really like to find a way to help our JROTC friends, who you heard earlier, not have to be in their current building. That, that needs to be addressed. Way to improve our ag programming with some, I'd love to have some space that could potentially be adjacent to the greenhouse, right, in some capacity, so that we are not, we're not at the ag building and then trying to get to the greenhouse back and forth with that greenhouse, you know, whether it's moving the greenhouse or whether it's a facility that's closer to the greenhouse, that clears up a lot of issues for us, not least of which being ensuring that we're compliant with ADA compliance, et cetera. And so, that would ultimately be, you know, the goal, but in order to, to know if this concept is valid, we need to know if we could actually build on the site. So therefore, what I am looking for is to ensure that there is, there is support to see first step one, if the site is a formidable option, or if it is not.
I think I would like to understand what the other options are versus the, the organizations that we've used before. I know there's organizations out there that are design-build, that, that would do both of the project, that would design it and build it all together, which costs, brings the cost down.
I think design-build is always an option, but I think that's a, a step ahead of where we are at the moment. I, I think our first step is to do an, is actual analysis of the site. Where do we stand with water retention? Are we able, do we have to add a retention pond? Do we have the, or is there anything underneath the ground? Has something been built on there before? There's a lot of things that, I think where you're headed to is more of a, of, of the, the structural engineering and designing of, of a structure, and I'm looking more towards step one, do we have a feasible site before we get to? I, I think where you are is, is step two in my mind. Like, I'm looking, I'm looking even back one from that. Can it be accomplished? Right? And then if we, if the answer is yes, that is an option, then we come back and we start weighing the options as far as if we want to pursue it. Now we start looking at, as far as engineering firms, could it be a design-build? Or is it HDH, or Stan Tech, or RRMM, or whatever other litany of, of companies to do that type of work? I think design-build is certainly an option, but again, I'm even, I'm even one step back from that to, to make sure that the site is feasible, so.
I got you.
Thank you.
In the spirit of no surprises, Jack, I think that it would be important that we have a better heads-up as to what the discussion is moving forward. I, I don't...
I didn't add this to it. I didn't add this to the, elicited.
But the vote, or the straw poll, shall we say? I, I don't feel that that was a very fair assessment for tonight, along with Dr. Hornick's idea of, of site feasibility, and I guess that's, that's the goal for the next step moving forward.
Yes.
I would also like to have conversations about, you know, if we decide that that site is feasible, when we go back to the designing and, and engineering, I would like to explore dual options, so maybe at the same time, we could be looking towards a, a secondary option, so that way we can have two before the board to make a final decision upon, but that, that would just be my request.
So you would be for the, the civil design?
For...
The engineer?
For the engineering of the site, that, because, I guess, I, I still, I'm not fully comprehending what, what the next goal is. Are we just looking at the land to see if the land is feasible to build on?
That is the absolute best way to summarize it, yes. We, we are, we have a concept of what we think could fit on a piece of land. The question is, can you, can you feasibly build on the land? And so that's where we would want, you know, a professional to really give us that assessment.
And that includes infrastructure, so like, water and power as well?
Correct.
That's all I have, manager.
So, yes?
For that step alone, for nothing further.
That step alone? Yes.
That step alone.
Okay.
And you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so you have a consensus, so...
Copy that.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, moving on. Try to get out of here tonight, people, sorry. Consideration of the VSBA membership renewal. Any discussion? Let's start with that.
Who wants to go first?
Madam Chair, do you want to, would you like a motion to have it on the table?
Sure.
Initially, I moved to approve the VSBA membership renewal.
Can you repeat that? I can't hear you.
I moved to approve the VSBA membership renewal.
I second that.
No discussion?
No, Madam Chair, I think everyone knows where I stand on that.
All right, so then I will call the vote. Vote. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I thought you just said that you would, that you made a motion to approve it. I'm sorry, did I misunderstand that?
Correct.
You did.
Yes.
Motion, motion to approve membership?
Yes, I moved to approve, and then...
And then you voted no?
Correct.
So, once again, this board, thank you so much for transparency, for discussion, I appreciate that. It's very apparent that you need no training in governance.
There's no other, there, there could be another motion on the table. Madam Chair, if you would, would you want another motion?
You would like to do it that way? I'm fine with either.
I, I don't think we need to do the, the show. I'll just call it the show. I, I think Sandy had some things that she wanted to say.
I did, I did ask for discussion, Ms. Harrington.
I, I think Ms. Harrington was...
You did ask for discussion, but this is not identified as an action item on this agenda. So I didn't realize that when I deferred to Chelsea, that she was going to make a motion, and that the motion that she made, she would vote against.
Madam Chair, I would like to recall the last motion, as we were, as I was a winning party of that motion, I am able to recall it. So, again, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the VSBA membership. If, if there is a second, that would open the floor for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Point of order. This is not on the agenda as an action item. I would move that we continue discussion as it is agendized.
Madam Clerk, in keeping with the point of order, could you clarify, or do we have the ability to make a motion even if it's not a, agenda?
Please talk louder, I cannot hear you.
I was, I was asking to clarify your point of order, if, if we are able to, per Robert's Rules of Order, if we are able to have a motion on an item that is not listed as an action item.
It is at the board's discretion, I believe we've been told before, but as you may or may not remember, I don't agree with that. I think that we have set up and established a process where information is provided, presentations are given, opportunities for the board to ask questions, and at the following meeting, we have public comment that then helps to inform us in our final vote and decision. So, you may do what you want, you have the majority, you tend to do that anyway, but that's how I feel about it.
Ms. Byron, did you have an answer for that?
It's up to the board's discretion.
Right.
Madam Chair, there's a motion on the table. I don't believe it's been seconded.
May I have a second for discussion?
The second would be to approve the renewal of the VSBA membership.
I will second, so we can discuss.
Thank you.
Okay, so, would you please explain to me why? Why we need to terminate this membership? Why you feel that this is not a viable, not contract, because we don't really have a contract, but a viable agency to associate with in order to ensure that we have governance training, support, legislative advocacy, those type of things? If you could please help me to understand why you don't feel that's necessary, it might help me.
So, we do have legislative advocacy. Sandy, you and I serve on that committee together, so I, I do believe that we have that covered. Board docs is included, or it's excluded, so all of our policies, et cetera, are our own, and we can continue with the board docs subscription, shall you say? Additionally, the Board of Education provides updates. There's also legislative guidance that's, that's put out by the Board of Education. So I believe all the bases are covered, and we are able to attend trainings, and, and by the way, we are required to attend trainings once a year, but it does not have to be through the VSBA. I have not had to use VSBA resources once in the last two years, and I, I feel like that money could be better spent elsewhere in our school system.
Just, Dawson, would you have anything to say? I agree with everything that Ms. Quintern just said, in addition to the fact that the VSBA essentially has been a monopoly for a very long time. They self-identify as a lobbying organization, and they lobby for many things that I, on principle, stand against, and I'm not interested in supporting them. They are, they demand that all of us, it's either all or nothing, it's a collective. None of us have an individual voice. If you try to disagree with them, they will shut you down. I've seen it happen. I've listened to recordings where they mock our governor and anyone who holds a conservative viewpoint, as I've been very clear that I do, and I prefer to take my training from someone who supports my values.
And, Madam Chair, would you mind sharing, since this was the number-one goal that you had identified at the beginning of our term, is to get out of the VSBA contract? Thank you.
Absolutely. Go ahead, share.
Do you want me to go first, and you go last?
Sure, please.
I mean, I'll be brief.
Be brief, Jim.
I, I'm not for us leaving the VSBA. I actually don't disagree with some of the comments that Ms. Dawson made. That being said, the board does not use the VSBA, the administration does. The VSBA does give training for all of us, but then there's been alternative options that members have chosen and have been supported in doing so. My concern is twofold, really. The VSBA, what, what they do is, when Richmond has policies and laws that are enacted, the VSBA basically goes through those and helps us update our policies and procedures to make sure that we stay in compliant, that we're not legally liable. That's what it does. Can other people do that? Yes, they can. Lawyers. And lawyers are going to cost money, and we will have extensive legal fees when we remove ourselves from the VSBA. And I will stop right there.
All right, then I will continue. So it's my understanding that we do have a policy committee. Any policy that we have written over the last year and a half, or two years, we have ran by our attorney, so even though they were recommended by the VSBA, we still had our attorney look over those policies. My biggest concern is that we are paying a lump sum for the board. The classes and all of the extra things are extra. They are not part of the fee. What's included with that fee is our policy review, a, it is a, sorry. We have a subscription for a week, or monthly, I forget what it's called, sorry. A monthly, monthly policy, or monthly newsletter, and then our membership services. And if I were to read the members of services, a, a strong lobbying group, a strong lobbying and advocacy, voice locally, statewide, and nationally. Just to clarify that locally, I don't know that they've supported us. They've, they've asked us if we would support certain policies that they were going to try to get done through the state. We in Orange County can't do electric buses. It's just not possible. That was one thing. There was many others. Publications, the daily news, webinars, podcasts, virtual meetings, these are all, other than the publications and the, the daily news, everything else on this is listed, is addition to the membership. High-quality conferences, webinars, and meetings, those are offered through other agencies. School board development and trading programs on varying topics, same thing. There are other agencies that do not require the entire board to be members of. Access to policy services. This, again, I was just stating, we do have a policy committee. We have an attorney that reviews the policies. A lot of the ones that we've done recently have come through our policy committee, not through the VSBA. Professionals to assist with superintendent searches, strategic planning services, community and public relations, legal concerns, and other school board needs. The bulk of those things we've already done, and I really don't want to be looking for a superintendent, so I don't necessarily need those services from them. Legal assistance fund to support access to the VSBA staff attorney. From my understanding, this attorney is when it comes to policy, not necessarily when it comes to the board. We don't have access to their attorney unless it's a policy that we are asking about. So, in my opinion, I, I don't think that paying the $8,850.13 yearly, in addition to the policy services, which is another $3,000 per year, and then additionally for the newsletter, it was another $400 a year, plus every-
Which we don't get, right?
Which we don't get. That's the one thing we've opted out of. But all of the classes, all of the webinars, all of the other services that they talk about, we pay in addition. We pay a minimum of 2 to 350, depending on where they have the, if it's a webinar, or if it's an actual in-person conference, per person. The school then has, is, is paying that for us to go, which, again, yes, they are paying for the other associations that are doing the training, but when they're not paying for a full membership for the entire board. So, my biggest issue is that we are paying for everybody to utilize a membership that maybe one or two of us actually utilize.
Madam Chair, I also would like to offer up the fact that I don't want to spend money on an organization that publishes op-ed hit pieces on single board members, which that did, in fact, happen to myself.
And Madam Chair, if I could also just mention the fact that you just named out a lot of thousands of dollars, multiplied by all of the school divisions in the state, and they are completely not transparent about where their money goes. They are, in fact, being sued now by a Hanover County parent who FOIA'd them, and they refuse to give up any information. So, we're paying taxpayer money to an organization that is not being transparent with the public. I don't know the results of that lawsuit at this point, but I think it speaks volumes.
Thank you. So, I was advised before the meeting tonight that the majority was not interested in having a conversation or compromising on this, that they would come to the board meeting tonight and would vote no on it. I'm not sure how that occurred, since they were not in a public meeting, that I remember. So, I'm going to direct my comments and my concerns to the constituents and the stakeholders. I have up here the new school board member handbook. I'm going to leave it up here. If anyone is interested, we will also have it online for you. I would like to provide all of the board members a copy, because I don't think that you have attended VSBA. Maybe one of you has attended a single training or, or two. Is that correct?
I believe Chelsea and I both went to the new member-
We attended the new member orientation.
So, one time, two years ago? Okay.
I also attended a couple of other training sessions in which they did not like my opinion, and I was not welcome to share it on certain hot topic items.
And I was also at additional webinars as well.
Well, I'm glad that you did take some advantage, because I was not aware of that. Who would you suggest is an alternative to the VSBA and the services that they provide? You said there are other organizations that provide policy, other organizations that have services for board members. Can you please provide your recommendation, or who you're thinking of?
I think that's the beauty of it. We all have a choice.
And you would still have a choice, even if we maintained our relationship with the SBA? Is that correct?
That is correct, but I'm not forwarding, I'm not forcing them to pay the $8,000.
You know, I find your argument relative to the cost pretty disingenuous, since you walked in here on the night that the budget was adopted, and you threw out three new positions for close to $400,000 without batting an eye. So, I, I think that's pretty disingenuous. I think that we have a lot of pros in maintaining our association with the VSBA. There are some misconceptions, and again, I have some information relative to misperceptions. I'm not going to read that to everybody, but I will make sure that this is posted and available if anyone's interested in it. One thing that really struck me was this one single-page flyer that said, "VSBA. Whose responsibility is it? Place a B in front of those items that are relevant for school boards, and an S in the blank before the item is managed by school administration." Even if we cancel this contract, I would suggest board members need to look at that. We have the opportunity to attend governance training and to become master, let's see what the term actually is, VSBA Master Board Program. Again, looking towards excellence, excelling. We do not have to adopt policy that is recommended to us through the SBA. I heard somewhere earlier, I believe Chelsea said, that we already have legislative advocacy. There is no way in this world that you and I can do the job that the VSBA organization does. What we will do, and what we had talked about, is being a complimentary process, that would advocate for things that are as important to Orange County, and our students, and our teachers, and our parents, but you and I can't do it. I am looking at policy, I am reading articles, I am researching hours upon hours on a daily basis. This is something that VSBA does for us. As a matter of fact, when policies are being discussed at the state level, they actually have representatives that stay in Richmond during that whole time, so that they can develop relationships, and they can have conversations, and they can advocate for things that their members agree to. There is currently, from my understanding, one single board in the entire state who does not belong to the SBA, and that would be Warren County. I was asked at one point, would the, would the Orange County Public School System and Board want to be recognized as a board and system of excellence, as is in Fairfax County or Falls Church, or do we want to align ourselves with Warren County? I don't know. Apparently, you may.
Madam Chair, I have one final comment before calling the question.
I'm not done. So, we have had a difference of opinion of how the board's roles and responsibilities are required, the legal obligations of those, and how this board operates. To many occasions, I have sat here and had information brought to the board the night of the board meeting, without having opportunities to deliberate or do the research that I would like to do before that. I have asked, time and again, to have specific time available, so that we can look into these issues, and not just bring them forward like that. For the majority, I, I would say that that has been adhered to, and I appreciate that. But, in my opinion, we have challenges just running a board meeting. It's not pretty sometimes. I get a lot of negative feedback from constituents and outside. I have a huge problem with you eliminating the opportunity for me, as a board member, to get appropriate training. If we don't agree with something that they are advocating for, we can have that conversation. Chelsea and I could then work with our local legislators to ensure or request them not to support it, or to change the, the language in some manner that may suit Orange County better. But just to unilaterally, as a majority, choose to terminate the contract, I just have a significant issue with that, and I personally feel that you are taking a huge resource away from me. We do board docs on that. I know that the superintendent and the board clerk uses the system quite often. I don't know if we have gotten any updates on additional costs for purchasing the board docs contract, or contracting with board docs outside of the SBA. I know that it is an opportunity. I don't know if we, there are other organizations who may be able to move our policy into another system. I don't know. I think that I know that some of the alternative school board advocacy and agencies that you may or have been involved with, and one that I had wanted to go and explore more, do have religious undertones included in their websites and the information that is out there. It is important that we recognize the importance of religion. We've recognized and respect individuals and parents in how they teach their children, and how they believe in their religion, but it's just like the books in the library. You don't have the right to tell a different student, someone else's student, or someone else as a board member, what they can or cannot do. So, you will do what you want, but I think that this is a significant step in the wrong direction, and I will continue to advocate for proper governance. And I would say that, you know, we also have a board member who has, on your Facebook page, taken out an ad to suggest to our citizens to vote against a legislative bill that was put out there, that would have helped this county fund facilities without any additional property tax burden, or anything else like that. So, I think that you are making a decision with bias, and I do not support it.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to address a couple of things. First of all, when I suggested the creation of the Legislative Committee, it was with the intention to remove, at least by one-fifth, to remove from the SBA. Additionally, this decision has no religious connotation whatsoever, so I'm not sure why that was intinuated either. But with that, I would like to call the question. Madam Chair?
All those in favor by saying aye?
Madam Chair, to clarify, the motion is to renew the SBA membership.
The motion's on the table, to renew the SBA membership. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All those undecided?
I said aye, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
My bad.
I got a little lost for a minute.
Understood.
And so, this will, this contract will now terminate when?
June 30th.
June 30th?
Our policies terminate May 31st.
And I, and I don't believe I heard any response relative to my request or question about who will be providing these services, so hopefully we'll get some feedback and updated our next meeting.
I will get a list together for you of other alternatives. All right, moving on. Discussion of policy revision, or discussion of proposed revision to policy DJR dash R. I believe this is Ms., Ms. Quinter, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just didn't see anything in our policy that would cover us on behalf of other parties purchasing items on our behalf without board approval. I, I don't wish to have a belabor discussion on this. I just would request, and I wanted to get this in front of the public, but request to have this run by our attorney for language. And this would go, fill in with policy DJR.
Dr. Horne, I think we had discussions on this one.
Yeah, I'll say, if, if we go back to March?
I think it was, when we had the renew, the contract, not renew, but the contract for the restrooms.
Correct, yeah. We, and we had met and spoke with our division counsel, and this was one that, if you remember, we wanted to take a look at and do quite a bit of separating as far as language, to have a little bit more clarity. So, this, this, this is the regulation we were referring to.
That's what I thought. Thank you. So, we will move forward with having legal counsel look at the, over this, and come up with some alternatives.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And if, if you don't mind, if he could also look at current policies and state law that are already in place, I, I just don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Ms. Harrington, Blue Ridge, yes, Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School Board Report.
We just were able, excuse me, the, the Virginia School Board Governor's School, end of year, had a discussion on the reports and presentations that the students provided, and also discussed the budget, and approved a 3% raise to be included in the budget for the administrator. I forget her, Dr. Horne, what's her title?
Ms. Elliott.
Want, yes, what's her title? Title?
She is the, she's the director of the Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to the Piedmont Regional Education Program Board Report. Ms. Dawson?
Yes, I was at the meeting last Wednesday in Charlottesville, and the board voted to approve employee salary increases from 1% to 3%, to be commensurate with what most divisions are doing for their staff. And that additional 2% cost is going to come from the fund balance, so there won't be any more cost incurred for the division participation of their students. The biggest challenge right now for PREP is that the contract at the Ivy Creek School with Albemarle County is going to expire a year from now, June 30th, 2025, and there is no place to go. So, they have formed a committee of board members and special ed directors and superintendents within the PREP Board to investigate the alternatives, the first of them being finding a new building somewhere at a cost that's affordable. Secondly, perhaps dividing up, maybe elementary going to one county, and middle school to a different county, and high school to a different county, which is obviously not ideal. Third option would be to temporarily suspend operations until a building can be found. And fourth option is to just disband PREP altogether. So, the executive director, Angela Neely, gave us a history. PREP goes all the way back to 1975, and it was a really fascinating look at a lot of challenges that they've overcome in that amount of time, and so there's a big challenge now, and that's, that's where it stands. If anybody has a rich uncle with an empty school building somewhere, we would like to talk to you.
We'll raise our hand.
Thank you. All right, moving on to six, board member comments. Do we have anything anybody would like to add?
I would like to add some, a couple of things, please. I would like to request that an item be included in future agendas that states future agenda items, so that we can have those conversations and thumbs up, thumbs down, agree or disagree on something, and whether or not we go forward and do further research and spend time on that. I was going to also speak of unity of purpose, but I think I'll save that for another day, because I'm not feeling very unified right at the moment. And then finally, as normally happens when I speak to an item, there is not a lot of attention given to what I'm saying, so I will again, again, ask, based on the CIP building discussion, I believe, that I had, excuse me, that I had asked for the superintendent to research and provide information back, and I got nothing. I'm just wondering, is that something that you did not agree with? And I can't even find my notes, so I'm sorry about that. Does anybody remember which item that was? It wasn't, it was request board to direct administration. So, I guessed, yeah, I forgot, and nobody else was listening, so thank you.
Do you remember what day it was?
It was just here. It was just a few minutes ago.
Oh, just here?
Yeah, when I, the last item that I was speaking to, at the end of it, I asked if I could ask for agreement to direct the superintendent to follow up on something, and unfortunately, right at the moment- And unfortunately, right at the moment, I just don't remember exactly what that is.
Well, the, the five of us, I mean, just to clarify, the five of us agreed to give him the permission to move forward on-
That was not, yeah, I do.
-civil engineer.
No, I'll, I'll remember. I'll bring it back next time. I apologize.
I just had one quick thing, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, um, graduation was Saturday. Um, I thought it was outstanding, um, under difficult circumstances. Um, despite a lot of public belief, the five of us cannot control the weather. But I thought Dr. Horneck, his entire team, and then, uh, Mr. Price, phenomenal job, pouring down rain when it began. Um, but everybody got in. It went quite well. That was one. Two, um, scholarship night. Deanna, I hate to put you on the spot. So Orange County Education Foundation, we have two board members here tonight. Thank you both for being here. What, do you know off the top, I should know, do you know off the top of the head how, how much Orange County Education Foundation gave out in?
Just under a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand dollars, yep. And Mr. Hager, your foundation?
Uh, fifty thousand for first semester. At the two-point-eight average, uh, they get, uh, only fifty thousand for second semester.
Yeah. Well, thank you both for your volunteer work. Doesn't feel like it, does it?
It's always a pleasure.
Yeah. Um, and scholarship night was, um, outstanding as well. Um, thank you. I think it was one point two?
Yes, close to it.
One point two million-
Yes.
-for our seniors for scholarships. Quite impressive. Thank you.
My, my comment also relates to graduation. I wanted to give a special recognition to, um, Adam Oats. He was out there in the rain, and we got there, and it took thirty minutes to get from the airport to the high school. And he was out there in the pouring rain. Pants were soaking wet. He had the biggest smile on his face, was running and helping people. Um, so I think he deserves a special shout out. He did an amazing job, um, with a wonderful attitude on the dreariest of days. So that was, that was well deserved.
Good, good point. Excellent.
All right.
Ms. Harrington, I believe what, what you had asked earlier, looking back, had to do with, um, the presentation earlier from Ms. Hatfield, and looking at A T I.
Other alternatives?
Yes, I did. I, thank you very much for reminding me.
Yes, ma'am.
I will provide this to you in writing, I believe, um, and that way it could be clarified. "I had requested the board authorize administration to research whether alternatives such as those offered through Anti-Trafficking International provide a value added for our students and community, including program costs, training curriculum, professional development, additional resources and support, and also comparative to other, um, offer, other organizations that may offer the same thing, including the Virginia Department of Education." Thank you.
All right, moving on. Um, June 3rd, um, draft agenda.
Um, I actually didn't put one up because-
Oh.
I have lately been doing so much action that I'm having to gut it. So it, um, the only item that we should be carrying forward at this time-
Is the calendar.
Is the calendar.
Okay, gotcha.
That we're presenting tonight.
Um, and the, um, board calendar is under here as well.
Um, actually, our calendars have finally slowed down. Um, so we have June, we have the school board meeting on the 3rd. Our retiree, um, it's actually a brunch. I put celebration, but it's a brunch at ten o'clock, and you all received invitations this evening. And we have our work session on the 17th. We moved that up because of some conflicts. And then I believe, Chelsea, you have a meeting with the-
Head start.
Head start? Okay. Never remember.
You already have Mary Washington on there.
Okay, so you have a head start. Okay. And then for July, if you approve, um, the calendar on June 3rd, then we will have a meeting on the 15th of July, and that will be our only meeting for that month. And then there is an Ed Foundation Board meeting, and we are also co-hosting with the County Wellness Expo at the Hornet Sports Center on the 26th.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Byram. All right, moving on. Closed session certification, please, Ms. Dawson.
I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A of the Code of Virginia. The Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A one of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, retirement of employees, and the superintendent's evaluation.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.
Huh?
You do your own personal trash can?
I do.
I do.